Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Neshamani School Board Tuesday, February 22, 2022, Public Board Meeting. Ms. Burns may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Parentano?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Of course I will.
Thank you. We all right?
The flag is lifted to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Announcements? Ms. Burns, we have any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. That brings us to Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. As you came in, hopefully you enjoyed the artwork by our students at Fertabar Elementary School and Pquesting Middle School. They had the month of February, so I'd like to thank them and look forward to next month's participation. As far as COVID, if you haven't noticed, the things are dropping as quickly as they raised over the past several months, and the administration is actively working on the phasing out of existing mitigation strategies. And I'll have an email to the community and the Board within the next couple of weeks as to how that plan will progress. Academically, though you probably haven't noticed, but we have our curriculum back up on the website, thanks to Ms. Burkholder and Mr. Bowman. What parents and the community will find there are the detailed teacher version of curriculum, the step-by-step content and standards-aligned curriculum. That said, for those that want a simpler version, they've also done a one-pager. So what does my child learn in chemistry, or what does my child learn in fourth-grade social studies is also there. So you can, one, peruse that and surprise your children at the dinner table by asking them, so you learned about a polymer this week? What exactly is it? That's academics, and Michelle Burkholder will be giving us a view of that website at the March work session. Finally, a co-curricular event? Does anyone know what began in 1954 in Neshamani?
Gym night.
Gym night. It didn't take very long. So gym night is upon us again. We used to be able to say every year since 1954, but last year we messed that up. It was started by a gentleman by the name of Harry E. Franks in 1954, and it starts with the parting of the colors, a very ceremonious event where our seniors come in, holding hands, mix together, they loop around the gymnasium, and then an honored guest fires them up and says, it's time to part the colors, at which time they leave their friends and move to the blue side and the red side. That division in the community, in the school, lasts for approximately 30 hours, and sometimes it lasts genetically throughout the community as well. It is not what others do as far as gym night, where there's exclusively relays. This is a rather sophisticated relay event, but also is probably more attuned to a dancing event, where students do a lip sync dance. This year's theme is dancing throughout the decades. I've heard a lot of Michael Jackson walking around Gym One lately, so I can't wait to see the event. And the best part is when it's all over, after those 30 some hours of red bursts into blue, they bring the school back together and rejoin the colors. So on the first weekend of March, it's time to part the colors, and if you want to learn about the gym night history, it's up on the high school website. So, Mr. Allen, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That brings us to first round of public comment. Signups for agenda items? Do we have any signups?
Stephen Linden?
Please state your name and your place of residence, and be mindful, there's a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
I'm Steve Linden from Feasterville, and I'd like to provide us with some additional perspective. In the recent past, I've tried to shed some light on the characteristics of this board, this district, in relation to some others. Of course, locally, I think Pensbury sadly stands alone in stark contrast to where we here in Neshamani. However, I think it's of utmost importance for us to realize that many of the issues that are of great concern to us are handled quite differently in other locales, and therefore they manifest themselves as such. Therefore, please note the following. Data compiled by William Jacobson, a Cornell University law professor and founder of CriticalRace.org, discloses that of the 25 most elite K through 12 private schools, seven had some form of mandatory training for students, as the CRT, and a staggering 2025 had some sort of curricular requirement change based off of CRT. Why is this important to us? Because like it or not, students from these schools will populate our elite universities, who will in turn attempt to strictly control all aspects of academia, and who will in turn funnel down to all aspects of local education. A bill in the Rhode Island Legislature, for example, Rhode Island House Bill 7166, supports and promotes activities such as a middle school assignment using pizza as a metaphor for various sexual activities. This has drawn a windfall of ire from parents in two separate New England states. The assignments liken cheese to kissing and olive topping to a form of sex, as examples to help students complete the task of listing their own sexual metaphors based on pizza toppings and their ingredients. So, thank you, Board of Neshamani. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Thank you, all concerned parents, that we differ from these locales so drastically. And what is on our agenda is more about the community as a whole. And by the way, it's wonderful to see us all unmasked out there in that audience. And once again, always remember, freedom is just one election away from extinction. Once again, thank you to this Board for a great job.
Thank you.
There were no further signups.
That brings this round of public comment to a close. There will be a second leader in the agenda. I am at routine matters. 2.01 minutes. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached minutes for the January 25, 2022 Public Board Meeting and the February 8, 2022 Public Work Session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion passes, and that is nine, zero. We are nine tonight, right? 2.02 Treasurer's Report. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached Treasurer's Report for January 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parentano. Are there any questions on the Treasurer's Report by the Board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes nine, zero. 2.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby ratifies and affirms the attached check register and procurement card purchases for January 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Marty.
Marty, sorry. Any discussion?
I forgot that face.
Are there any questions on the check register by the Board now? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion also passes nine, zero. 2.04 Bids. Just like to note that the Board, on request of the Facilities Committee, has tabled the trash removal bid pending further review. So that brings us to resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached bid for February 2022, and it's for the purchase of 10 buses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That motion passes nine, zero.
Mr. Chair, just at this time, I think it might be prudent to explain that the Board has been, through the last couple yearly cycles, trying to update our bus fleet as much as possible, within the limits of our budgetary concerns and also the grant money we receive sometimes, and we've committed ourselves to at least replace buses on a 10-year schedule, and we're trying to do 10 every year. Couple years ago, we were only able to do seven, but this has been an ongoing process by which we're trying to make sure that our transportation for our students is up to the highest standards, and of course, with new products, a greater level of efficiency comes and less maintenance. So we've supported this over years, and I'm glad to see we continue to move forward in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parentano. 2.05 Investments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby ratifies and affirms the attached investments for January 2022. There's was a final review. Any questions from the Board on the investment sheet?
I need a second first, though.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbeck? She beat you.
Just threw you under the bus again. It's amazing, this bell. Yeah, that's right.
Any discussion from the Board after we fixed the table there?
Oh, my God, this meeting today.
That's why you put me in this spot.
Well, it's actually for improvement.
Yeah.
It'd be a good time, a motion for a new board table and structure.
All right, there was a motion, there was a second by Ms. Hollenbeck. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions. Motion passes nine, zero. 2.06 Exonerations. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached exonerations for January 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any Board comment? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes nine, zero. That brings us to Agenda Item Three at Personnel Administrative. Mr. Parentano, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Item 3.01 Revised NASA Act 93 Agreement. Be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors approves the revised Act 93 Agreement for the Neshamani Administrative Support Association, NASA, effective February 23, 2022.
Is a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes nine, zero.
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff, and there are two names associated with the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Parentano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sporni. Any discussions? Then seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes nine, zero. Welcome those people to Neshamani School District. Brings us to four. Agenda Item Four, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Mr. Allen, would you like me to make a master motion for all these categories?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to make a master motion to approve 4.01 Retirement's Resignations End of Assignments, 4.02 Appointments, 4.03 Leaves of Absence, 4.04 Revised Leaves of Absence, 4.05 Revised Returns from Leave, 4.06 Co-Curricular Resignations, 4.07 Co-Curricular Appointments, and that's it.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero.
Can I master motion?
You certainly can. Personnel support, Mrs. Hollenbeck.
I'd like to make a master motion for Personnel Support. 5.01 Retirement's Resignations End of Assignments, 5.02 Appointments, 5.03 Leaves of Absence.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. We are at business operations?
We didn't even talk about this.
Maybe we didn't.
I'll ask the question.
Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 6.01 Elementary Food Service Line Improvement Approval. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following purchase of equipment for upgrades to school serving lines for Hoover, Miller, and Fertabar.
There is a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any Board discussion or questions on this item?
At this time, could we have Mr. Irwin just give some background on these particular items for the school cafeteries?
Yes, these items are being, let me back up. This year, because all children are receiving free and reduced lunch throughout the country, and particularly here at Neshamani, the cafeteria fund is doing very well, and this is an opportunity for us to reinvest some of our proceeds from that windfall that we're having this year back into the students' lines, if you will, both at Hoover and at Miller. In addition, at Fertabar, there's going to be a walk-in freezer also purchased there to improve the overall process and effectiveness and efficiency to feeding the students lunch there at that elementary building.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Anyone else have any questions?
And the district is paying this from the windfall of money that we received from the program with Aramark, correct?
Yes, this is all being fully supported cash-wise from the food service program. That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Seeing no further Board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero.
6.02 Sunday Facility Usage. Whereas according to Board Policy 800, facilities fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves Sunday usage for, and there's two names listed on here.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sporni. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. That brings us to Agenda Item Seven, Educational Development. Mrs. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 7.01 Student Settlement Agreement. Whereas the Neshamani School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number 7XXXXX1, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for educational programming as specified in said agreement.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. There is no motion on 7.02.
May I ask to mention a rest room?
In terms of our legal advice?
Is the motion missing from the agenda?
Yeah, the organ of the motion is missing.
Which one are we on?
7.02.
But if it's not in there. This is, okay. As a district placement. Are we allowed to just stick it in there if it's not written in there? Yes. You just want to make sure we use proper verbiage. Pull it up and I'll read it from here. I don't want to wait until you get it wrong. Can we come back to it and I'll do 7.03?
Yes, please. Move on to 7.03.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for 7.03 Overnight Trips. Whereas according to Board Policy Number 618, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approve the overnight trips listed below, and there are six trips planned.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any discussion on those trips?
I have a question about number one. Just because it's so far in advance, are there contingency plans in case something happens and, you know, the sky starts falling again because it's not until 2023? Like, are the kids going to be protected?
Yes.
My apologies, I was on the other one. What was the question, Ms. Hollenbeck?
The AE Education.
To Hawaii, are there contingencies in place since it's so far advanced and God only knows what will happen?
So, if you recall, you probably don't recall, when, back when this all began, in the winter of 2020, we had an AE trip scheduled to Italy. So we were beginning to, so we, parents, for the most part, were held harmless in that process based on pandemic policy. So since then, we now require parents to purchase the insurance as well, and then it's clear upfront what is their loss if they cancel or we cancel, et cetera. So this is the biannual, every other year trip, and usually it goes to Europe, but we're not ready to go there yet. We're not ready to go there yet.
Hawaii's got really strict. Yeah, Hawaii's to get shut down. Well, that's why I asked the question about it.
So the actual company we use is the same company we used during that spring of, I'm losing track of the years, was it 2020? And we worked with them extensively. Actually, we were trying to get the trip to go before we shut down as to what the process was in closing it down, so we did all that work. So I'm very comfortable that parents will be fully aware of what the exposure is and will minimize the exposure based on our knowledge.
Yeah, because Hawaii's closed at the moment. Hopefully it's open. Okay, thank you.
Give you a photo on that?
Someone took it.
It was second. All in favor?
Aye.
I get lost in my thought process, but, opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none. That motion passes nine, zero. Ms. Bowman, you want to bring us back to 7.02?
Yeah, I'd like to make a.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I was going to say I could read it for you, but if you have one that's.
I have it right in front of me. I'd like to make a motion, 7.02 Out-of-District Placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-school providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below, and there are three students listed.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes nine, zero. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, waive Keystone Exam proficiency as a graduation requirement for the class of 2022. Whereas Board Policy 217, graduation, was approved and adopted by the district on May 22, 2018, in accordance to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and local district requirements, that all students achieve a proficient status level on state and local assessments. Whereas Board Policy 003 permits the Board to suspend a Board Policy by a majority vote. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with Board Policy 003, the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the temporary suspension of the graduation requirement language noticed and noted in Policy 217, that a student, that a student achieve a proficient level on state assessments for the graduation class of 2022 at Neshamani.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parentano. Is there Board questions or comments on this motion? I do. Could we elaborate on the motion, please, Dr. McGee?
Presently, the Keystone exams are in algebra, biology, and literature, 10th grade literature. And next year, the graduating class will have a state requirement to be proficient on them. We talked about that at the last meeting as to how we're going to get them there. Presently, there's a local graduation requirement that students are proficient on this, and we have our own system to make sure that they graduate if they're struggling with the test, to make sure they get assistance on the topic, but yet passing a test is not the gatekeeper to a diploma. Over the past one, two, now three years, we've had one, a lack of a test in the first year, and I will say a somewhat altered instructional plan during year two, and this year, a somewhat less altered instructional plan. But so I actually, I believe holding that as the standard is no longer appropriate for this particular graduating class, and we should relieve them of that burden and continue on, as we did the class of 2021.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Bring us to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero.
All right, that brings me to motion 7.05, BCIU Number 22, 2022 to 23 Program and Services BCIU number 22, 2022 to 23 Program and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget. Whereas the Nishamani School District is one of the 13 school districts in Bucks County that utilizes the services of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit number 22, and whereas the Nishamani School District contributes to the support of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and whereas the school code requires that the intermediate unit budget be presented and acted upon by the Board of School Directors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby, hereby approves the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Programs and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget for 2022, 2023 in the amount of $2,171,414, with our district to share to be $61,161. I hope I read that correctly. There's like too many decimals in the last one, that's it.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments or explanation on that?
Darwin, or whoever, where does, where does that stand in relation to last, our share of last year's budget?
I will take a shot at that, it's very similar. Okay. There's nothing, nothing substantially different about it. So this is, this is not the entire IU budget, this is just a particular piece of it, programs and services.
Seeing no further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes nine zero.
I'd like to make a motion for 7.06, 2022, 2023 Student School Year Calendar. Whereas each year, the Board of School Directors must establish an official school calendar for the coming year, and whereas the Board of School Directors reviews the proposed calendar at the February 8, 2022 Public Work Session, and whereas the proposed calendar was forwarded for comments to each of the employee bargaining groups. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby adopts the attached school calendar for the 2022, 2023 school year. Be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors specifically designates November 25, December 26, and December 29, 2022, and April 6, and April 7, 2023, as the official local school district holidays in accordance with 24 PS Section 15-1502.
Thank you, there is a motion on the table? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sirullo. Any discussions on the calendar?
Dr. McGee, at this time, just to make it easy for the public here and watching at home, could you just give the noticeable beginning of school, end of school dates? I don't know if you, oh, you don't have them all found? Okay.
Calendar is very similar to this year, we begin on a Wednesday, I believe it's September 1st. I was on the wrong board meeting because I forgot a motion, hold on. So staff begins back on August 29, and on Wednesday, August 31, our kindergarten 5th grade and 9th grade begin school. On Thursday, September 1, all students report to school. And then we proceed very similar to as we've done this year with the end of school, weather permitting, being June 16 with a tentative graduation date of June 14, 2023. Underscore italicized tentative.
Thank you, Dr. McGee.
Seeing no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine zero. Brings us to Agenda Item 8, Policy, Mr. Sirullo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, I'd like to make a motion to approve 8.01 Second Reading of Policy. Whereas the first reading of Policy 903, 626, in series 200s, 200 pupils, was completed at the Public Work Session on February 8, 2022, and whereas the following policies are being recommended by the Policy Committee for board adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual, and you see the revisions listed below.
Thank you, Mr. Sirullo.
Excuse me, you just need to resolve to adopt them. There was a, looks like maybe there's a line missing, I'm not sure. So you can just resolve to. To adopt them and just go ahead and list them since we don't have the language.
Okay, so now therefore be it resolved to, to approve to be adopted. Got it, number 903, Public Participation Board Meetings, number 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance, number 215 Promotion and Retention, number 223 Use of Motor Vehicles, number 229 Student Fundraising, number 231 Social Events and Class Trips, number 231.1 Class Trips Classroom Extensions, and number 246 School Wellness.
Thank you, motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Piratano. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Motion passes nine zero. Is there any other board business? I'm addressing the board, now Ms. Burns is there?
I just wanted, for other board business, it's just more of a comment, hot off the presses, Middletown approved us for the Fields Project 5.0, so we will be moving forward with the high school Fields Project.
Didn't know we were in front of the Middletown Township Supervisors this evening with our legal and Paul Mean to plead our case, and apparently they've won, so good news. Very good news. That brings me to 9.02, which is our second round of public comment. A three-minute time limit, the podium is open. Anyone, any takers? Seeing none. That brings us to 9.03 Board Comment, this evening.
Sorry, I have no comment.
But he said he had no comment, see, I knew that yet again.
Intuitively, he knew.
All right, I apologize, Dr. McGee. That brings us to, let's start at this end of the table and work our way around.
I'm good, I have no comment this evening, thank you.
No comment.
I just want to take a moment to thank everybody for coming out. I appreciate, Mr. Linden is in his comments at the podium. You know, every night on the news, and I should stop watching the news. I think sometimes all of us should stop watching the news. You know, I, I hear these things about how bad school boards are and all these bad things that school boards are doing, and, and, you know, I wish those reporters would come here to Nishamani and see what happens when a board is transparent and open and encourages the public participation. I'm not saying we're perfect, I'm sure we've done plenty of things that, you know, people aren't happy with, and I'm sure we can all talk about that. But, you know, the, the big part of this job is, is common sense. And I'm glad to say there's no shortage of it around here, both from the board members and from the administration and the staff as well. We're here to educate, not indoctrinate. And I think overall, we do a very good job of it. Very happy when the public comes out and tells us we do a good job. And to be honest, I'm also happy when they tell us we're doing a bad job because we, we need to know, because we're here to represent the public. So I just appreciate, you know, those comments, and like I said, I'd like to start hearing some nice things about school boards on the news, but I, I don't think that's, that's going to happen, so thank you.
Sure, I can make a quick comment. Nothing to do with any policy or things like that, but just something that I wanted to mention here that I witnessed firsthand. A few weeks ago, I have children at Buck, at Pearl Buck here in Langhorne or Levittown, and I was picking them up from school, and I thought this was so worth mentioning. So I picked them up, there's the line that you go around, and you stop your car and the whole thing, and my two little kiddos get in the car and jump in, and to my, to my right, someone was trying to walk across the street. Now this person was helping an individual that's mobility is aided by a wheelchair. So this person was all dressed in their bright yellow jacket and things like that. So this person, I let them walk across and kindly walk across, and this person was the principal. So I just took note of that, I was so impressed, I'm so impressed by actions, you know, as opposed to words and things like that, and I just wanted to mention that. Mr. Kern, you know, great job, you are a leader. I was trying to look up quotes, I love quotes, and really the only quote I could find that, that matched it was, "Leadership is not a position or a title, it is an action and example." And I thought that couldn't, couldn't find anything better to summarize what I witnessed there. So, so I'm sure there's thousands of things every day all across the district that happened for the kids and the community and things like that, but that was just something I witnessed firsthand that I wanted to recognize here.
I just wanted to wish everybody a great gym night. I don't think we'll be here before then. We won't, so, don't forget, I think they're still taking peanut butter and jelly donations, so you can bring those, they're gonna go to, oh, they're stopped? Okay, I'm sorry, but go Blue.
No comment.
All right, thank you all for attending the meeting this evening and participating. As Mr. Piratano said, our job gets, I'm going to say better because, you know, if we are working in a vacuum and we are not hearing from the community, we're not doing our job. And that's not good for our students and the community. So coming out, voicing your opinions, whether you send us emails, whatever, keep, keep it up, we appreciate it, it does help. Comments I wanted to make were, again, I am thrilled that the Fields Project has moved off what seemed like a dead stop, we weren't moving forward on that. I'm thrilled to hear that, that we've gotten approval to move ahead. I understand Mr. Sforney went out with our architect and engineers and walked the field on behalf of the Facility Committee. Do you have any comments on that or of your visit?
Sure, sounds like I have to. Yeah, I did walk it, so I walked it with the engineer, with the high school principal. Mr. Irwin was there, and I believe our Director of Facilities, Mr. Maloney. It's a great project, it's a big project. I personally played sports in the stadium many years ago, so I, you know, selfishly wanted to see what was going on. There's plans for a large structure building, entrance building underway that will replace the, what I'll call small sheds at the moment. Entering the stadium, full renovation of the stadium field itself, mill and new overlay of the track itself, everything. I was happy to see, I had a lot of questions, I'm an engineer, I have thousands of questions, when I ask them, I have a thousand more. So I was really happy to see that everything was pretty logical. All of the new renovations were being kept in place over the last couple of years, that have, things that have been redone, that's all staying. And everything that, as I was walking around, everything made sense. So that was the stadium itself, and then as you, for anyone very familiar with that area, when you head out, there's the, what I'll call the practice football field. That is being pretty much fully redone, new turf, new small stands, I believe, things like that. And then entering up to the tennis courts, what's now six tennis courts will be eight. The baseball field will get new, grass will become turf. In addition to that, almost all of the infrastructure around the, the baseball stadium, the backstop, and the player, all sorts of, yeah, I'm not a baseball player, obviously. So all of, all of that area is getting redone. And then all the way across the property on the other side, the softball field is getting redone. But, but really, my takeaway is that it's a fantastic project. I'm really looking forward to seeing all that come to fruition. And I left it, left that meeting definitely very positive about everything that was going on.
Thank you. I said the Fields Project is one thing I think we can all agree on, that regardless of where our children start their education, they all end up there at Heartbreak Ridge at some point, most definitely graduation. So the, that, we can make that, our fields, the stadium updated for this century is all good.
Well, let's not forget this project started as a new field for the.
Correct.
For the field hockey team, and three and a half years ago, and somehow it's now morphed into a total complex, which, which it's needed. It's time that we bring these facilities up. Wasn't done when they rehabbed the high school because of costs at the time. Now I just think we're in a, I just say that just to get Mr. Allen excited, but, but it's, it's time that we match the surrounding districts and offer similar fields of play, which will have better use and more use. And we'll be able to expand our teams for, sports for, for the children that are there looking for it, so. So we'll move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Fields Project, other than thumbs up to us all? I want to thank administration and Dr. McGee for getting us to where we are with our COVID mitigation. You know, without getting into too much detail, we had no idea where this was going back March 2020, when suddenly the doors shut, kids were on buses, and had no idea when we're getting them back in. It has been a long struggle that we are here. I don't want to take a victory lap just yet, but in the starting blocks, we're getting there. And I, I just can't wait till, till we no longer have to talk about, I know more about infectious diseases than I ever thought I ever needed to know just by sitting on a school board, who knew? That brings me to the STEM. Mr. Kovitz, could you remind me the date on that?
March 29.
March. STEAM Expo. I know, he says STEAM, I say STEM. The, add the art in, nothing, just I come from, come from the mechanical world. And Gym Night, as we said, this was, I believe, the highlight of the district. And what happens at Gym Night, the separation of the colors, it's extremely ceremonial. But it's, as Dr. McGee pointed out, those of us who have grown up in this district, whether we came to this school or not, your friends, as I was at a product Catholic school, and, and my friends would say, well, you're a Blue Team. But, but I don't go to this school, didn't matter, you have to leave because we were discussing Red Team stuff and we can't have that. It's fascinating, and I so enjoyed my, my high school years being able to come up here and observe and help when I could, my, my friends and neighborhood that were members of the Shamy School District. So I'm just greatly thrilled that we're able to come back to this Gym Night. It's a time-honored tradition that, we all need that relief and to come to that culmination and let it all out at Gym Night, and then again, to be able to come back together as a community, that's just awesome. again, to be able to come back together as a community. That's just awesome. And with that, subject of future meetings, we have, let me see, March twenty-second, the, that says public board meeting, is that correct? I'm sorry. I'm looking for the work session. Three, March eighth is our public work session, and then on the March twenty-second, we will have the public board meeting. And with that, sorry, second, you'll know what's coming next. Nine point oh five, adjournment. Do I have a second, Ms. Hallback? All in favor? Everyone, I'm not even asking. Thank you.